So I just want to call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Town of Washington Planning Board. We do obviously have a quorum here. We're full. We're one of a rare moment. So we'll do the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. So just a quick word. We had a change up here on our board. Andrew Spence has resigned. I would just want to thank him for his, I think it was about five years of service to the board and to the community. And Adam Brando was our alternate and is now a full member of the board. So welcome, Adam. So the members of the board received the minutes of the last meeting? Any changes, comments? Okay, can I have a motion to approve those minutes? Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. So tonight we have one workshop and then a combined workshop and public hearing. We're going to start from the, we're going to switch the agenda and start off with this very lot line change application workshop.
Thank you.
Sure. Just a few words. The applicant wants to make a number of lot line changes in a subdivision. No construction is proposed. At our last meeting, we voted to classify this application as a type two for Seeker, which requires no further review. We also requested that the applicant have a new survey prepared, which they have done. No public hearing is required on this lot line change, as is our general policy with lot line changes.
Well, since the last meeting, and some surveying out here, we located the couple of lots involved in the lot line change that had structures on them. We went out there and we located the structures to make sure we weren't creating non-conformities with respect to setbacks with moving these lot line changes around. We did that and we added it onto the map and everything is working out well. To, do you want me to go through each one of these? There's a total of eight lot line changes. I can do it quickly.
Do it quickly. How about that?
The main thing that we're doing is the act in the subdivision, which is on County House Road and Maple Hill Drive. The main thing that's being accomplished is we're swapping the access points for lot seven and lot three. Lot seven will now be serviced off of Maple Hill Drive and lot three will be serviced off of County House Road. There's an existing driveway cut and a portion of the driveway is roughed in there already. So the lot line changes. What we have here in orange, which is, will be the new access for lot three, that was actually a portion of lot seven. The magenta was lot three and is now going to be lot seven. So those are those two. Because lot eight, which borders this on the south, is going to, it will utilize a section of this driveway to access its slot as it was previously approved in the old subdivision back in the eighties. That will remain. Lot eight is picking up this little blue sliver of land, just so they are still contiguous and can cross over onto their lot. That's that little tiny triangle.
Okay.
In heavy blue. Lot three also, because of the construction of the roughed-in driveway, needs to pick up this little tiny area that was lot nine. This is in yellow. So that would take care of lot number three. Because lot nine is a pre-existing non-conforming lot and to keep it the same or bigger lot size and with the road frontage that it has, they are also, oh, and also to solve the problem, part of, portion of their driveway was built upon the adjoining lot over here. The parking area was. So what we're doing is this solid blue right here puts the parking area totally on this lot, keeps the lot as the same dimensions as it was before.
Is it still non-conforming?
Well, it's, no, actually, well, the only thing that's non-conforming about it is it doesn't have 200 feet of road frontage, but it never did. It has the same amount of road frontage as when we started to where it is now.
Okay.
The legally significant point there is that it's not increasing the non-conformity.
Yeah, that's the reason for the multiple lot line changes.
Yeah. That's why it took so many to keep everything from increasing any of the non-conformities. Oh, the only other thing with lot three, which I failed to mention, because we would have been substandard to the lot side, we had to add a little bit more land to get it backed up to 1.37 acre. So they were taking just this yellow section from lot two, which is less than 200 of an acre, just to keep it non-conforming. That takes care of everything down there. And then we go to the swart property that it joins. As we discussed, portion of their driveway was built upon lot two. And what we've done is an equal area swap with that. The swarts will be picking up a portion of lot number two, and that's this little section here in blue. And they would be conveyed to lot number two, this little tiny area here in yellow. That's all eight. Everything is basically staying the same. We're just swapping some access and cleaning some encroachments up.
Does anybody have any questions?
Does the change with the other, with the neighbor involve them in this? Or is this?
They are involved.
They are. So are they a party to this approval?
They sent a letter and they signed paperwork saying that they were authorizing them to come and do this. The only thing, I had a note that you have to have permission to file receipts from Dutch's Department of Health before I sign the maps, right? But that's all?
Yep. I will, once, I will get that this week and then we will.
And you'll come back to me to get it.
I will send you an email and hopefully we can get you to sign once they sign.
Yeah, great. Okay, you can leave it here with the Planning Board Secretary and then I can come in and do it. That's probably the best way.
That'd be great.
Okay?
Yes.
So are we ready to approve this application? We received a resolution from Joe. Has everybody had a chance to review that?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve that resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
And seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Thank you all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I want to say something. I've been involved in town government for 16 years. I appointed building inspector at the Town of Washington when I was 25 years old and almost 16. I've become a lot of meetings, planning board meetings before, way back when, and I'm a sessor for 42 years. And it does me good to see the board. I've been, I've been to the last six meetings, I think, here. The Health Ray Gonzalez, who is out to continue. And you've all had a good meeting, a lot of good input.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Thank you. Appreciate that.
You still have that original map with all the.
Yeah, I like.
Oh, yeah, I got that. You incorporated colors tonight.
Jennifer, I can't see who's on, is there a way to change that so we can see? But can you change the visual so that it just shows the people? We really don't need to see ourselves. But that way we see their names and who's here. Great. Much better, yeah. That's an interesting view. Okay, so Alicia is on there.
Yeah, you know what?
I am on and I am .8 miles away.
Oh, okay.
I was right there.
Susan, this is Leslie Heaney speaking. Sorry, the only difficulty here is that now we're looking at, like a, it's almost like a setting where they're, all of our pictures are non-pictures or.
Oh, you said same thing.
We don't see the room now. You know, which is, you know, we can hear everyone, but I just wanted to point that out. I'm not sure where the, where the glitch is on that.
Like normally in Zoom, you can have it where they can see a whole thing, but we could see just.
Yes, usually you can see who's on the board and we can see, you can see who's on the call, rather, and we can see who's, you know, we can see the room.
Do you have the ability, Leslie, from where you are, to just maximize that one, to change your visual?
Let me see. I may have to bring in reinforcements that are under 50, but let me, let me see what I can do here. Yes, now it just came back up. Now, now the room is back up.
Yeah, now we almost see. We're just going to have to leave it on the room, I guess, but it's, I was hoping that we could just get a view where we could see who's there and that way if somebody raises their hand, it's easier for me to know that they're wanting to speak.
If they do that, you would see them, but they could also unmute and just say something.
Yeah.
Because that's the way Zoom is always default, they have to show you who's speaking.
It's never looked like this before.
It's this option or the other one, that's all.
Yeah, that's new. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, so the next.
I do believe when you switch view, you stop recording. It came up with a note that said.
It says it was recording.
It does? Okay, sorry.
Oh, that's good catch. Don't want that. Town board meeting last week did not, or two weeks ago, did not get recorded. Okay, so the next matter is the clear application, and this is an applicant seeking approval for a conventional subdivision of a 90-plus acre parcel into five lots. We've been workshopping this for a couple of months now. And we're going to have a continued workshop and then a public hearing on an issue. So if you're here to speak on the clear issue, we're going to first discuss some other matters, then we'll open the public hearing. So if you can sit tight for a little bit, okay? So Jennifer, you're going to speak or who's? Let me speak for you. Oh, Doug.
Yeah, I'll, I guess I'll just do the normal introduction that I usually do. Are you going to need the introduction again for the public hearing, for the public to hear?
No, no, the public is at the meeting and we're, yeah, that's, it's okay.
So my name's Doug Larson, I'm an architect. I'm here representing Mr. Clear and the rest of the team. Jacob from my office, Jennifer is a land use attorney and cat. It's a environmental company. So Tim and his wife own about 90 acres of land along Stanford Road.
There's an easel behind you, Doug.
The property is 90 acres along Stanford Road by.
Can you hold on one moment? Alicia, can you hear Doug speaking? Oh. Can someone, can someone on Zoom tell us if they can hear? Doug, it's a little hard to hear you, so we want the people on Zoom to hear, so maybe.
Hi, hi, this is Phil Hanum. I am on Zoom. I can hear. But there's been, yeah, there's a few scuffling around the microphone, but generally I'm able to hear the presenter. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, so I introduced myself, I introduced the team, and I was about to show the property. This is approximately 90 acres along Stanford Road. It's bisected by Woodstock Road. There's already two houses on the property, a historic house on the north side and a ranch house on the south side. So two houses on one property. Mr. Clear and his wife would like to subdivide the property so that each house has its own lot and, which leaves about three lots left. So he would like to have three additional lots to sell off and then they're sort of at the periphery of the property. We've looked at the different options in the zoning code about subdivisions and we believe that a conventional subdivision is most appropriate in this neighborhood. So I think Jennifer, you might want to add to that why we came to that conclusion.
Should that be done now as opposed to after the beginning?
I think, I think we were going to discuss some other issues first, so it might be better that we leave that until we open the.
Yeah, we've got some specific responses to inquiries that were made internally. I mean, the introduction obviously is necessary and important, thank you, but let's do that first and then.
Okay, so I'll turn it back to you guys to.
I think so, yeah.
Ask the questions, all right?
So Alicia, right when you walk in the door, so I just want to come to you and there are comments that you guys still have. I know we, we have received a new letter from the CAC regarding the fact that under the NRI that was adopted, new NRI, that this is a tertiary recharge zone for the aquifer, correct?
Yes, and the applicant actually also did identify that in the initial assessment. And it, that area is just, I think, just in the northwest portion of the plot. And the outside building envelopes. It's not, it's not something that, that the application had failed to consider initially.
Okay.
Okay, it's a recharge area. Did you use the word aquifer? Or it's drinking water, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm not sure it was an aquifer.
Oh, did I use the wrong word?
I mean, might have. I think it's drinking water.
Oh, I thought it was aquifer recharge area, but.
It could be.
Don't fall, no.
I'm just, I'm just, my thinking, my thing should be clarified that it's not an, over an.
Have the letter here somewhere.
It's not over an aquifer.
Recharge aquifer recharge area.
Oh, sorry, it is an aquifer recharge.
Okay. Okay.
I was going to avoid development that could contaminate the drinking water. But it does appear that the applicant considered, could fix up that and decide. It comes to the other comment that we had on the CAC letters.
And you did say the building envelope that's proposed on that, on that particular parcel is outside of, outside of that.
Yeah.
It's outside the tertiary area.
And then we had, in addition with the bog turtle issue, the applicants have agreed to do a phase ones of the bog turtle issue, which is a more in-depth analysis of whether bog turtles actually exist on the site, correct? Rather than that this is a fairly good habitat for them and they might be here, which is what we had before. So.
My, I'm not a doctor, so it's expert, but my, my understanding is that a phase one is to determine whether there's a potential for the habitat, but it doesn't have to be like definitely using bog turtles here.
Oh, okay.
But that's the next step in the assessment, that the first step is, hey, maybe there's a, this could be a place that bog turtles might live. And now it's a little bit more definite, it will be a little more definite after what's the survey concludes.
Okay. And then we had Wetland Consultants, our wetland consultant went out, and I forget what were the, could somebody remind me?
Essentially, he concur with the applicant's assessment of the wetlands and also recommended the phase one survey, noting that if, if the potential for habitats was uncovered, that the building envelopes could be readjusted to account for.
And he went out to the site and reviewed their experts' wetlands delineations and comments and agreed with that. Okay. Is there anything else that, no?
Words, we have all the other major points that, or to declare the agency's system.
Seeker. Okay, so for Seeker, we had no response from the town board. We sent out notifications that we would like to be lead agency for Seeker. The town board said no response and the DEC had no response. And once 30 days elapses, then they're considered to have agreed. The Highway Department, the Dutch's Department of Health said that they had no objections. So in light of that, we can declare ourselves the lead agency. So we had, Joe had prepared a resolution, which was shown to the board. And has everyone had a chance to review that?
Yes.
And any changes or comments or? Can I get a motion to adopt that resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. Now we come to our public hearing for our evening. They, so at the outset, I just wanted to point out that this hearing is limited to the question of whether the planning board should allow this application to proceed basically under the conventional subdivision type. Changes might be made to some of the things that they proposed, but that this would be allowed to proceed under the conventional subdivision type, or whether we should require a cluster subdivision type of application. So I would ask anyone that would like to speak on this subject to keep all your comments to that issue and also suggest that everyone try to keep it brief because there seems to be a lot of people here and I think it's, it just helps to get the, the meeting moving.
I'm sorry, I tripped you. This Zoom is apparently muted, so they can't hear us.
Oh, boy.
I don't know if that's fixed yet.
Hi, this is, this is Phil Hanum. I'm listening in virtually and I've heard everything so far. Thank you.
Okay, so it's somebody that's muted themselves, so maybe.
Leslie, can you hear us? No, she can't hear us.
Well, she can't hear us or we can't hear her. Do we know she can't hear?
Could mean that she has a problem with our audio.
That's what we're saying, yeah. Yeah, do that.
I want to add one thing to that introduction. Just for the sake of the public, so this is also understood, that narrow focus of tonight's public hearing that the chair described is correct under the procedures of the Code of the Town of Washington. But everyone should know that this is an initial step in this process and there'll be a full subdivision review, a full seeker review, and ultimately, once the determination is made as to how to go forward, the appropriate public hearings going forward on the larger application. So no one should be under the impression that there's any of your comments ultimately are being proposed, it's just on this particular issue, whether or not a cluster should be required. So that, that's why the limitations, like that's what the code calls for.
Great, very helpful. Thank you. Leslie's our liaison to the town board, so we're trying to get her in the meeting. Leslie, can you hear us?
Thanks, sorry, I don't know, maybe I got muted when somehow when I, or when I was trying to figure out how to.
Okay, okay, no worries.
What about the other?
No, they said they can hear. They already said, yeah, yeah. So one last comment. The CAC has previously given us written comments on this question pursuant to the subdivision regulations, which require them to weigh in on this topic. So can I get a motion to open the public here? Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So yes, Jennifer's just going to give us a summary and then we can open to comment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Van Tyle and one of the documents that we filed with our application was called an open space report. And this is required for any subdivision application that meets certain cluster preference criteria. There are a number of them in your code. So we filed that report and I'm not going to take much time, this is a public hearing for public input, but I am going to explain what our position is on the preferred type of subdivision and why we came to that conclusion. We believe that cluster is an excellent tool for planning, but it's not necessarily the right tool for every situation. As Doug mentioned before, and I'm going to try to get out of the way of this map, this is our proposed subdivision, lot one, which is the existing farmhouse. Lot two, a new lot of 10 acres that will have access to Stanford Road and then accessed internally along Woodstock Road, we see parcel three, excuse me if I said the wrong number. And this is parcel one, which is 23, approximately 23 and a half acres. And then on the south of Woodstock Road, we have two large lots. Parcel four is the one with the existing ranch house and that's 23 and a half acres. And then parcel five is 28.425 acres. There's only three new houses, as Doug pointed out. Our preference for a conventional subdivision is really quite simple. We favor that because this subdivision layout reflects all of the properties around it. This map shows the parcels that surround the proposed subdivision and this proposed subdivision is very compatible with the neighborhood in that regard. Now, the town zoning law provides, and I'm, I'm going to give one of the new section numbers, because the code has just been codified, so it's so exciting to speak about new numbers, 16552B. Well, I didn't know the old one that was, so that the cluster is only the right tool from the toolbox when it can accomplish certain purposes. And this is in the zoning law. And of the top three, two of them are compatible, compatibility with surrounding land uses and overall character of the area and provision of adequate setbacks and visual buffers from adjoining properties. And we believe that our conventional subdivision has provided that. And again, we can go into more detail about that. Our application and this entire report is in our application. But the, our lot sizes are congruent with existing lots in the neighborhood. And I'm not going to go through all the details, but I think you can see this on the map. There are absolutely no cluster subdivisions in this neighborhood. All of the neighboring parcels were subdivided and laid out as conventional subdivisions. In contrast, the cluster subdivision regulations in the town require certain features of a cluster subdivision that we believe would be antithetical to the neighborhood. The lots could not exceed one acre in size and they would therefore not be similar to the neighborhood. The lots in a cluster subdivision have to be grouped, meaning that they have to be placed very close to each other. And what that does, of course, is it makes very high net densities when all of those lots are together, wherever they're placed together. Houses are, the separation of houses is only 60 feet required and frontage on a road is only 150 feet, whereas you see that the frontage that we're providing on all the roads far, far exceeds that. So the lots wouldn't look like the neighborhood, they would not have the privacy that the existing lots in this neighborhood have, and they, of course, would not have a similar value because the value of the property is associated with its size as well as the privacy that it provides. The last factor to consider is that this property is within the agricultural overlay district. And because that's the case, the open space, if a cluster were to be mandated here, could only be used for active farming. And we don't believe that that's necessarily the appropriate use because our soil analysis showed that less than 20% of the property is actually agricultural soils. So again, that might not be the most protective use either for some of the natural features that are, are on the property. So it's just, it's just certain unintended consequences, I think we, we could say, that would be required. And for all of those reasons, we think that a conventional subdivision is the most appropriate. And I'd lastly mention that the same zoning section, 16552, encourages flexibility. encourages flexibility in the design and development of land, not necessarily a lot step cluster for every subdivision. And so we have been discussing in our workshop sessions to date the kind of flexibility that is appropriate for this property to assure that it's compatible with neighboring uses, that privacy is provided to both the future owners of these lots as well as our existing neighbors. And certainly, that's something that the planning board would continue to consider, and we will continue to hear public comments on throughout the continuing subdivision process that Mr. Haryell referred to. This is, this is a mandated short-term decision that is to be made within 45 days relating to sketch. So it's a preliminary decision to be made as to what path we're walking down. But again, we endorse and fully support public comment. And I agree with what your attorney said. There will be further subdivision public hearings to address the whole. But we think it's very clear that conventional subdivision is the appropriate development for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone in the audience here that would like to speak? If you'd like to speak, can you stand up and come to the front? So otherwise, the microphones won't catch what you say. That's the only difficulty. And if you can give us your name, and then go ahead and say whatever.
I'm Pam Parton. I live on Stanford Road. My mom was actually born in the farmhouse on that property. So I don't have any problem at all with a conventional subdivision. I think that's great. But how, who's going to make, and when will a determination be made? Cluster housing, I rally the troops and protest that. That's, I mean, it's all like, big lots, private lots. I can't imagine passing in there. So, you know, what's?
Well, the process is we're going to have public comment tonight. And then probably at our next meeting, we'll hold a vote and discuss it further. But it will be pretty soon that that decision would be taken.
So that comment that you just made as a neighbor is precisely the kind of comment that we're looking for as to whether the cluster or the convention.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else in the audience here? How about, oh, I don't like, go ahead. It doesn't seem like there's anybody else in the audience. Thank you, Rob. We won't be able to catch you.
So. Adelaide, I live on Stanford Road, and I've lived and walked by this farm for 25 years. So you've probably seen my letters about how upset I was that it would be subdivided. So I can't really speak to, I mean, I can speak a little bit to cluster, cluster and the, now clear, I mean, and the conventional subdivision. In that, I mean, I understand your rationale for it. I surely do, because there are a lot of big lots around. But for me, this was a property that should have been put and was recommended to be put in permanent easements by the town for decades now. And that's what my letter says about, talks about. And so the, the problem I have with even being here at all is that that wasn't protected. Because of the wetlands, we get swampy land, full of water. The soils we know are really not, not the best for building. I mean, that's all over the place in the soil maps that I've seen on other letters here. And I'm not an expert in either of those things, but I know from looking at the property next door, which abuts my, my property, that there are a lot of also endangered species habitat, species habitats there because the land has been open and untouched for so many years. So I actually reached out to US Fish and Wildlife. There have been, you know, it's been noted that these habitats exist, and I gave you a letter today. But I just received a response from them, so you guys may not have this.
She dropped her phone.
Just wanted to talk from. So they talk about the need to do an inventory, and that they approved the, for two species of bats and furcs. And I know that sounds like a lot of unusual things to most people. But these lands in this town is filled with very special species because we have these big habit, these big parcels that haven't been touched in decades. So that's what makes them so important. That's what makes this town so precious. So the town board has neglected for about 50 years putting these conservation zones in place. And that's what I explained in my letter that I wrote to you today. So that's really why we're here, because this is supposed to be an easement area, part of lot, watershed, there's huge wetlands that go beyond me. There's a lot of them behind my house. And so I know just from watching the wildlife there about how special it is. So I, when I bring up, when I see the reaction from US Fish and Wildlife, which just requires you to do a proper inventory and a fuller one that you might be planning on doing in consultation with US Fish and Wildlife, I wonder like, how that sequences with making this decision, cluster. So it seems to me you need to know what's there before you make that decision, even though I understand your rationale for it. So, okay, I'm not an expert in cluster subdivision. But for me, that it's just a, it's the beginning of the end of very sensitive habitat that should never have been subdivided. You know, ideally, for me, I would have been able to know Mr. Clear sooner. I've never, I only met him tonight. Most of the neighbors I talked to have not, you know, don't know him or met him. But there's lots of ways to preserve farmland and easements, to preserve farmland and open space. So I'd be happy to share some of those resources as well. But it's sort of, for me, difficult to hear that this would be subdivided at all.
Thank you. I have, you can access it. Adelaide, just to point it out, do you have your, this is a response that you got from them.
It was long, I just tried to make it shorter and not two pages. So my, basically, I'm happy to send it to you.
Yeah, why don't you forward that to me, and I'll forward it along? Just so that people can see what you asked.
I gave them the whole application, the link on the website. I told them about the biological surveys. I provided them with all the information.
Okay, yeah, forward that along, just to be complete, that way. Thank you. Again, is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak? Yes?
Fletcher Cottington. I've sat on the ZBA for a good many years. And one of the things that concerns me about this site is that there is indicated Indiana bat habitat on the site. Somebody said that as long as you cut the trees down when the bats aren't there, it doesn't matter. That's not true. Because the bats return to the same area, the same location, the same tree, year after year after year. So I don't know. I mean, somebody said it's okay to cut them down. And to my knowledge, that isn't the case. That's all I've been able to say.
Thank you. So I don't think there's anybody else in the room that is raising their hat, correct? Okay, so is there anybody else on Zoom that would like to speak to this issue? Hi.
May I go ahead?
Yes, please.
Thanks, I'm Phil Hanum. I live on Canoe Hill Road in Millbrook. And I followed the, the last planning board meeting as well on this discussion. And I realize that you want to maintain this discussion focus just on the cluster subdivision question. And so I don't have any objection to that as a member of the community in terms of it being, you know, traditional form instead of cluster form. But I just want to make sure that from the understanding of the community that that decision, if the board decides to take it, does not prejudice a broader discussion. And I think, you know, very much as, as you heard elsewhere in the room, of a discussion of what balance the community wants to see in terms of protecting this as a special environment and one that is prone to degradation. If there is a series of lots and we don't have any, without any controls on the type of homesteads, lots that people might develop on those, on those properties, that endorsing the cluster, the, this type of a subdivision would not prejudice a broader discussion on finding that balance between the applicant's interest in developing it and ensuring that the sensitive ecology is respected. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
If you don't mind, I've got a question I'd like to just throw out there. I'll speak loud, that's why I haven't got a club. My name's Jim Moro, and I live on Stanford Road, actually right on the corner where your first, I have the short, the small five acre subdivision is going to be. One of the problems we have, I've been living near for 40 years, and the traffic situation on that road has increased like crazy. It's now a shortcut from Stamfordville to town Millbrook. People don't want to go all the way down 82 to 44. They cut back up, they cut right across Stamford Road. If you're talking cluster housing, that's going to be detrimental to Stamford Road, to Woodstock Road. Just, just the traffic alone for the few people that do live on Stanford Road. It's tough now. I went to the dump this morning as I was pulling out to go to the dump. Who pulls across Stamford Road to go to Stamfordville? Tractor trailers are now taking that route. Because 40, because 82 was shut down, they are working on. They're taking that as a shortcut to Stamfordville and Pine Plains. So if you're talking cluster housing, that's going to be a major problem on that road.
We don't even have roads on the road.
No, we don't. And, you know, the tarmac road is basically oil and gravel. And they fix it whenever they feel like fixing it. So that's a major problem. Part of the problem with the, you know, the areas that are swampy on that road. Just up from her house, in winter time, water sometimes will go right over across the top of that road. It's so swampy through there. So there, again, you're talking subdivision. I mean, that's going to affect people that live on the other side of the road, which is me and other folks that aren't here tonight. This really has to be considered deeply, not only for cluster housing, but even for subdivision. I mean, I'm looking at some of your lines here, and the lots are big enough. All right, mine is five acres only. I think the folks next to us are 10 acres only. Eight acres are the one that's up the hill from that because that was her mother's house. So I mean, there's small subdivisions, yes. But we don't have a lot of other stuff on those properties either. So the water problem on that road in that particular area is real bad. So that needs to be really taken into consideration.
And to clarify that statement, did you say that rain, that when that water comes across Stamford Road?
There has been times with, in the wintertime, with snow and whatnot, with snow melt, where water comes off right across that road. And that would be. I mean, you can look down if you take your time. It, it used to be the Campbell House, and I don't know if it still Campbell's that live there or not.
Is there a COVID town?
No.
Can I ask which side of the road are you referring to? Where it's coming from?
Both sides. Well, actually, it's, it would be coming from the west side across to the east side. You go across the east side, the folks that live next to us, there's a pond that's back down there that's part of where all that water runs.
There's a lot of water around there.
So.
We really can't have a cross talk because none of this gets caught on the video. And then people want to know what was happening in the room. So I hope that they can hear you because you didn't come to the front, really. You need to come near the microphones. We don't know whether you're going to be caught up.
Well, I'm done basically talking about it. But you're really going to have to take that into consideration because that is swampland down through there. And if you look in behind the last house, past the corner, past my driveway on the left-hand side, you can look right down behind their house, and it's all swamp down through there.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom who would like to speak? There's no theory. Okay. So. Yeah, again, you really have to come to my phone. This is not going to be caught up.
I just want to emphasize the water.
Quickly.
Because I really didn't say a whole lot. Sorry. I, when I opposed a development here because of the wetlands 20 years ago, that the property abutting me is also abuts this property. We studied the water quite a bit. But in my lot, there's a lot of steep slopes there and rock. The water rushes, in major storms, it turns into a stream in my backyard. So there is so much water, and that land is so swampy. I know from talking to the farmer, people that have lived there for years, that the houses, while there's a lot of water all the time. So I can't imagine building on it. But the other thing I can imagine doing, because I know just from living on a rock, I live on a rock ledge, is putting septic in, in this water situation. This property, in my investigation into it, and I wasn't opposed to the development at all. I was opposed to it being done the way it was being done and in a way that did not protect the water. But that triggered eight years trying to get small wetland ordinances to protect water. And so, I mean, that's just to your point about water. It can't be overemphasized. So septic's are very tricky there. They're impossible at all.
Okay, thank you.
Which is why it was supposed to be a conservation use of property. One of the reasons.
So since there are no further comments, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we are not really going to vote on this tonight because we do have to have final CAC comments before we can vote on this. And they had a subsequent memo or letter that was a draft, and that will get approved by them the next time, the next time they need. So we can vote on this at our next meeting. Would you like to talk about it now and vote on it next? What, how do you want, how do you want to do that?
So that's what's holding up the vote tonight, is this formal CAC letter, yes.
If I'm not mistaken, I'm, I'm thinking the applicant having heard some public hearing comments may also want to.
Want a chance to address some of those comments.
Or an opportunity to think about whatever.
Right. That would have to be submitted on the 22nd as part of the submission.
Two weeks prior.
And is the next meeting on election?
It is, that is, that is on the calendar. I'm going to bring that up to everybody. And I intend to keep it that way unless there's objections.
Is there a public hearing up for that, even?
No.
Yeah.
But they don't have voting machines?
No, we could, we could vote over.
No.
That's a good question.
No, good point.
Okay, great, yeah.
So in other words, our responses would be submitted to you at the time of the usual submission.
Two weeks prior to that meeting, yeah.
So just to be clear, though, from what I, I heard, there wasn't one single person in the public or questions from the board that indicated that some, some community member had a preference for cluster subdivision. Every comment I heard was a comment in favor of conventional subdivision. So, yes. Just want to sum that up for.
That's a good point. I think we're hearing a lot of concern about when, even if we're doing a conventional subdivision, that we need to be careful about septic and water and all of these different issues. But nobody is saying that they want a cluster.
And this is just a vote next board meeting to decide which direction this application goes. It's not making a decision on the application. It's just making a decision on the direction, the path for this application.
Correct. And one of the comments that was made, I think by the gentleman that joined, I assume, was about ensuring that this decision is not some sort of, pardon the pun, but slippery slope on the path toward any potential approval. And the simple answer is no. It, this is really the beginning, this is actually part of what in your code is, is called the sketch plan stage. So this is in some senses when their hard work starts once, once that decision is made. And all of those issues will be fully vetted at that point. And before I forget to ask you, Jennifer, will you be okay with a decision next month in terms of the timetable?
Yes, actually, we're asking for the opportunity to review the comments.
Because there's a time.
And, and yes, and I agree, this is a preliminary decision. It's supposed to be made very, very quickly. We definitely consent to it being postponed until the next week. So you have a chance to deliberate on it and we have a chance to postpone. Okay, good. So I think we'll just discuss it at the next meeting after hearing that comment and et cetera.
All right, that's it for the same thing. Thank you very much. We already closed. I do need to close the meeting, but.
Or we can go home.
Okay, so can I get a motion to close it?
It's a move.
Seconded? All in favor? Okay, great. Thank you very much. No problem. Bye, Leslie. Thank you.